Okay, back to the informal reports. The next one is on redistricting procedures. And Fernando Costa is available if there's any questions.
Looks like questions. Go on up Fernando. Gina was first.
Fernando.
I would always defer.
I mean, she's quick on the draw there.
I had several conversations recently on redistricting. And so I wrote out some notes because I wanted to be real prescriptive into what's on my heart. And when you take a look at this council, this is a brand-new council. This is what we call a flipped council, truth be told. And so I think it is respectful and necessary that the new members hear from staff, that being you, all the pros and cons of all redistricting options, including the independent redistricting commission method. Now, I know some people don't like the word "commission," but out of respect to the new members of this council and the people who voted them in, this council as a whole needs to know everything that can be on the table and not just the perimeters, the three of us and the formal council members prescribed. And so I think it's just very important, and none of them have hit me up for this, but you know, we got 10 years, we get a shot every 10 years. And so I just think it's fair for them to know what options are there. Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense, and I'd be happy to give it a try if the mayor and city manager will give me the green light. You've raised a question that warrants a thorough response, and I'll try to convince it for the benefit of the council. We are currently following the procedures for redistricting that the city council established in April of this year by adopting a resolution, accepting the final report of the redistricting task force, and approving almost all of their recommendations. And those procedures emphasize participation by local residents in the redistricting process and transparency whereby the city council will make all redistricting decisions in properly advertised public meetings. And there are various specific elements in those procedures that we can discuss at your Under the city charter, final approval of any new council district map is a responsibility and power of the Fort Worth City Council. Under the charter, as it currently stands, you cannot delegate that responsibility. You have the final say. Now, with that understanding, there are, as you inquire, various options that you may wish to consider. Obviously, one option is to continue along the present course. And we've made a good start already. We've gone through all the or many training sessions for residents on the use of redistricting software, and we will be holding more of those sessions. We have been registering neighborhoods and groups of neighborhoods as communities of interest. Tomorrow is the deadline for registering communities of interest. And by next Monday, September 20th, the redistricting software will be fully loaded with all the pertinent data that residents need to begin producing proposed council district maps for council consideration. So we're well underway with the redistricting process. Now, in addition to following that course, there are perhaps two or three other options that you may wish to consider, and there's still time to consider these other options. One option is to establish what could be called an independent redistricting commission. That is to say that you would appoint a small group of impartial city officials, and we would suggest the chief judge of municipal court, the city secretary, and the city auditor to review applications from any interested and qualified citizen, and there would be specific criteria for determination about who would be deemed to be qualified. And from that pool of applicants, select a small number, perhaps five, as the core members of an independent redistricting commission, not unlike the process that the city of Austin has followed since roughly 2012 after the 2010 census. That core of five independent redistricting commission members would then review the set of applicants and appoint another six or so for a total of 11 independent redistricting commission members. There's nothing magical about these numbers, but these are suggestions that we would make for your consideration. That independent redistricting commission could be delegated the authority that you currently have to conduct public hearings and to produce a proposed redistricting map subject to your approval. You would have the final say. But you could delegate to the independent redistricting commission the responsibility to produce a proposed council district map through the same process that the council would otherwise follow. We could describe the pros and cons. Some people who favor independent redistricting think it's more impartial, more fair. Those who favor the current process would say that the current process is more democratic and promotes more accountability to the voters who put elected officials in office. That's a philosophical question. We could argue both sides of the question with equal vigor. The redistricting task force was not asked to address that question of independent redistricting, but they did, and they were split on it, five and five. So they had no consensus to recommend an independent redistricting commission to the city council, and they did not. But they did submit a minority report. You may recall that former council member Sal Espino, on behalf of a minority of the redistricting task force, presented a minority report with a recommendation to that effect. So that's the independent redistricting commission option. Another option that you could consider is the appointment of an advisory committee comprised of citizens that the council appoints, not independently appointed, but appointed by council members. That would have the advantage of having a separate group providing you with advice and delegating to them the responsibility to conduct those public hearings, relieving the council of that workload. But those advisory committee members would be tied to the council by virtue of your appointments. That's not to say that they're going to be puppets of the council by any means. You elect them to exercise their own discretion. You appoint them for that purpose, but they would be folks that you would select to represent your districts on the advisory committee. So that's yet another option. It promotes transparency and participation but retains a connection to the council, which would make it different from the independent redistricting. Those are some basic models and some of the pros and cons associated with them. If you wish to proceed along any of those other models, we certainly would have time to do so, but not too much time because the clock is ticking. Our expectation is that we would allow the months of October, November for the residents to produce their own proposed redistricting maps. And then in December, we would brief the city council on the maps we've received and the extent to which they comply with the adopted redistricting criteria. We would also present to you a staff-produced council district map. And then in January, you would conduct a public hearing and select one of those maps as your initial map, your starting point for redistricting. You'd then have another hearing, and then the months of February, March would be devoted to the council preparing a council district map. You would then conduct a series of four more public hearings in April, and then finally approve a map we would recommend in April or May because by July, any candidate for a seat on the next city council would have to establish residency six months in advance of filing for the May 2023 election. So we have a fairly narrow window of time within which to accomplish all of these activities. It can be done. So if you were to give us direction in the next few weeks in favor of one of these other options, we could certainly accomplish it. I would remind you that we have scheduled a joint work session of the former redistricting task force and the city council for Tuesday, October 5th at 10:00 in room 202 of the Fort Worth Convention Center, at which time the task force members will be able to communicate directly with you not only what they recommended, but why they recommended it and why they think that approach makes sense. So we'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have at this time about the redistricting procedures.
I just want to say thank you. And I didn't mention it to the new people because I just needed it to be straight, you know, from me, but I didn't want to have information and not make sure they knew that they weren't boxed in. And so.
Nobody's boxed in. Your predecessors, the former city council, did adopt a resolution establishing those criterion procedures. If you wanted to revisit any of those criterion procedures, you're certainly free to do so. We would strongly urge you to do so in a timely way so as not to constrain yourself unduly in adopting the final map in a timely way.
Chris, and then Carrie.
Okay. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. On these other options, either one, if we choose to implement these options, that does not deteriorate what's already in place. So that means the community still will get to choose their maps.
Oh, yes. We'd have the same amount of participation, the same amount of transparency as we're currently providing.
So this will be in addition to?
This will be in addition to, yes.
Okay.
You would be delegating to another group the task of conducting public hearings and producing a proposed map, but you would ultimately be the body approving the map. And it would not necessarily be an up or down vote. You could get a proposed map, and you could modify it before you approve it. You just would not have to go through the entire process to do so.
Okay. Thank you. The second question is, because I'm sure that we're going to have thousands of maps, and I know that your staff is going to present these maps to the council.
Yes.
How are you going to?
I don't know about thousands, but certainly a large number.
Hey.
Could be thousands.
We don't know. But how are you guys going to present these to council? Will you pick and choose, or will we be able to?
You'll see all of them. We may need to classify them, categorize them somehow so that you can begin to make sense of them because we do expect a large number of maps, many more than we got 10 years ago when we last went through this process. But we'll want to analyze them and present them to you in some coherent way so that you can make a sound decision.
And the person who submit the maps, will they be identified to us?
Yes, yes. It's essential that people.
City council district?
Yes, whether they be individuals or civic organizations of some kind, they must be identifiable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie.
All right. So first, I just want to say that I think we, as a city, are taking much too long to do this. You've got to keep in mind that this week, the state will, I would say by the end of this month, you're going to have the state legislative districts redrawn, the state senate districts redrawn, and the U.S. congressional districts redrawn. And the timeline you have put out there, which seems to be, and we all want to be transparent. No one does not want to be transparent. We want to have as much community engagement with this as possible. The timeline you drawn does not afford any room for legal challenges in the courts, given that the deadline for residency is July. And so that's my main challenge with your timeline. I think we could curtail, streamline this process by 60 days very easily and still have the same type of public process and transparency that's out there. And keep in mind that this public process has not just been when we got the data in September to when your proposed decision is on April. The timeline on this started in late December, late 2015, when the council at that point said, "We want to put a public vote out there to add two more council members." And we put that through the May 2016 election to say, "Yea or nay, do we want two more council members?" And it was decided through a public vote that we wanted two more council members. So then the next council took on the task of trying to put the process in place on how this would be done, and felt like that the people that should have the least, we wanted to, that council, I say "we" because I was on that as well, wanted to have that process in place so that the people that are most likely to run in 2023 would not have to make some of the hard decisions. And so what I felt like we said, the prior council, was that it would go through the public process, and the independent review board is 918,000 people that can go on YouTube and watch a great video that the city of Fort Worth has on how to use Esri software, design their own map, and submit it. And then from there, the council and staff will streamline, will start grabbing maps and filter it into where there's a select few that we choose. We go through May, I'm sorry, through January, the final map's chosen, and we could then, in a public process, present that out there in four meetings as opposed to 12 to come up with a final map. So I just feel like that based on the models that other governing agencies have, we're taking way too long to decision this, and we're subject to a court case with this. And then you have members of council members not able to establish residency in districts that they may be drawn out of. So my request is that we move everything back at least eight weeks so that we decision this in February as opposed to April.
Well, we are following the procedures that the city council approved in April. However, if you'd like to modify those procedures, we're happy to follow your leadership.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, one similar in timeline. And I wrote notes just to make sure I'm clear on this. How would the timeline that you detailed here in the IR be effective if the council wanted to appoint an independent group to make separate recommendations to the council? And then considering Carrie's point, how could that timeline be modified by, we can still include all of that?
It is conceivable that we could do both, although it would narrow appreciably the amount of time that residents would have. So instead of allowing residents a little more than two months, you could limit that time perhaps to four to six weeks or some shorter timeframe. You could also limit yourselves to a shorter timeframe, perhaps four to six weeks down the road because you already will have had a starter map. So you're not starting from scratch, you're modifying the starter map. So while you've already allowed yourself at least two months, you could shorten that. You could shorten one month out of the resident process and one month out of the council process and conceivably finish work by February or March and allow yourselves time for any legal action that may entail. Although we don't necessarily expect any legal action, but that may be a safeguard you want to provide. We can certainly do that. In addition, it is conceivable, although a tight timeframe, to establish an independent redistricting commission to begin by informing our residents about your intent and publishing an application form, not entirely unlike the board and commission application form, but more specific and more narrowly tailored to this purpose. You could do that. We could easily draft an application form and accomplish that process within the same timeframe. But I would say it's important for the council to give us direction, one way or the other, in the next three or four weeks at the most because otherwise we start running into a time crunch.
Right, that makes sense. A couple more questions, two more questions and one more comment. In that same train, I thought if the council wanted to employ an independent group that would make recommendations to the council on the new districts, what action would the council need to take?
You would need to adopt a resolution, effectively modifying the resolution you adopted back in April, and establishing the provisions for this independent redistricting commission because it currently doesn't exist. You would have to spell out the details of that process, perhaps in line with what I just described to you whereby you appoint those three impartial city officials, they select five, those five select the other six, and you delegate to that group the responsibility and authority to conduct public hearings and perform the other work that you would have performed under the current process, subject to your final review and approval.
All right, thank you for that. And then one comment in relation to, once we get ready to do the redistricting trainings, personally, as someone who's been trained in grad school with Esri software, it's not an easy software for the everyday person to use. And so I really want to impress how important communication is about these redistricting training sessions that we'll have. And I really would like to see us make a robust approach to making sure that our neighbors are informed about these meetings. I personally want to take on some of the workload on my office's shoulder and say that I'd be willing to host several in my office so that I can dust off my GIS skills a little bit with my neighbors. But just, I think, you know, I can't stress enough how important it is for that training to be had and for folks to be there because it's not an easy software. I know there's some misinformation out there that it's something that you just download and you just start getting to work, and that's not the case with this software. So that training is really, really crucial.
Thank you, customer Williams. I think it's fair to say that it's not easy. Easy is probably not the best description, but it's not hard. It's certainly something that any reasonably intelligent person can learn, as we've seen because already dozens of Fort Worth residents have acquired that skill by attending our training sessions, and we will be holding more training sessions. In addition, we'll be holding what we call collaboration sessions whereby someone can participate. They don't have to get their fingers on the keyboard. They can be part of a small group that is telling somebody else, "Why don't you see what would happen if you read through the lines in this direction or that?" So one does not even have to use the software directly to participate in this process. I think it's fair to say that we're going to have the most participatory process we've ever had in Fort Worth, and ours is likely to be as participatory as a process as you'll find in any city that's undergoing redistricting.
Yeah, one more point to that point, just so I'm on the record on this. I think that the independent redistricting commission only adds more participation opportunities. And so I would really like to see council take action to consider, you know, all of our options, as Mayor Proton Bivin said, of how we move forward the redistricting process, including the independent redistricting commission and the advisory committee that you, both options you laid out.
Sarah, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, even if you adopt this compressed schedule, you may not get finality from a court decision before that 180 days. So you just need to realize, even with the compressed schedule, it may not get there.
Okay. Any other council members? Elizabeth? Yes, ma'am.
I just, when we talk about the IRC today in the form that you mentioned, they would start the process and provide us that initial map to go off of, correct?
The residents would start the process, and the independent redistricting commission would select the initial map. They would then go through the process of producing the final map, subject to your approval by that February, March timeframe.
And when you say "subject to our approval," so in that particular scenario, we would vote a map up or down, yes or no?
No, no, it would not have to be up or down. You could modify it.
Okay, in the same process that we have laid out in the resolution right now?
You would not follow that entire process. You could just decide what changes you wanted to make. I'm sure you'd want to have at least one public hearing before taking final action, and then you could do so. But the whole idea behind the independent redistricting commission is that you delegate it to a group of impartial but well-informed citizens, subject to your approval, because that's what the city charter requires. Some advocates, some advocates for pure independent redistricting whereby the final decision rests with the independent group, some of those advocates would say, "This is a way to give independent redistricting a try without the risk of an independent group making the wrong decisions." So the last word resides with the council.
It's a way to give the IRC a try without giving the residents of Fort Worth the opportunity to vote as to whether or not that's what they want to draw their map.
Ultimately, the voters would have to decide whether or not to amend the city charter.
Right, and so to do this IRC option, we would have to first amend the city charter, correct?
No, no, no.
So that's what I'm asking. So let me back up. So you gave us two different options, the IRC, where we have an independent group create the maps, and then the advisory committee, where we have each person from our council district create a map. So they would start with the map in the same way that we would have asked in the initial process for staff to create that map, correct?
Let me modify it in two ways. The independent redistricting commission, in its purest form, is what Austin has been doing whereby the final decision rests with an independent body. We will not be able to do independent redistricting in its purest form. We can do a modified version whereby the independent commission produces a proposed map, subject to your review and approval. So it is not truly an independent redistricting commission, but it contains many elements of independent redistricting.
And so our review and approval would be in the same manner that we have put in the resolution, that any changes to a proposed map would have to be on the record and we would have to give it.
Yes, and those same rules would apply to the independent redistricting commission as well. Any changes to the starter map would have to be done in the light of day at public meetings. They could not be done through backroom deals or anything of the sort. But a lot of that work that otherwise would be done by the council would be done by this independent commission if you chose to move in that direction. And then, once the council gets the proposed map from that commission, you yourselves would be subject to the same transparency provisions as the independent commission. Now, we'd be happy to come back to you with a full-fledged briefing if that would be beneficial, or if you're prepared to make a decision at any point, we'd be happy to follow your direction. We would suggest that no later than your October 5th joint work session with the redistricting task force that you give us clear direction.
Thank you. So Carlos, did you have a question?
I had a question, it's just a brief comment. I agree with what the discussion is going on here, and I think that for the purpose of giving a little relevant background, we alluded to that prior resolution that the then-council took action on back in April. You know, I had asked at the time for reconsideration, clarify the language, anticipating that we would have these kinds of discussions. So I'm welcoming that. But again, language matters. You know, we need to know exactly what we're doing, okay? The original resolution did not preclude, you know, having an independent redistricting commission. You know, we all understood that, right? But I just wanted further clarification.
The April resolution did preclude independent redistricting. It said the city council will conduct the whole process from beginning to end. It did not preclude the possibility of this council.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes. There's actually specific language that says nothing in this resolution will preclude, not preclude. That's right. The current, the new city council.
Right.
From rethinking the process.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and all I wanted to accomplish on that reconsideration was further clarifying language to help us now in this anticipated discussion.
And Carlos, one thing that's important, Fernando mentioned the five-to-five vote. We don't know how the vote may have ended had one member not taken ill. So it was just that then. And. And when I use the word perimeter that we identified before, you know, the committee that Lorraine handled, they did not feel comfortable going beyond what they perceived as their parameters to be. And so I just don't want to sit across the table from five new people and not know that there are some things that they need to know. So I feel duty-bound. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando.
Thank you. You want us to come back?
Let me think on that. I don't know. At this point, I want it to be fruitful in the conversation. I do think that words matter, and at this point, calling it an independent redistricting commission is probably confusing to the public, because if we're not going to do a charter election, it is probably not independent redistricting.
It's not a pure independent redistricting commission.
And so I think the vernacular we use is going to be important moving forward as first. This is personal to me, and I'm sure my fellow council members may have differing viewpoints on this, but I think part of the fun and service as mayor and council is being a part of those public meetings, and abdicating that responsibility to someone else to be a part of that and not hear feedback from community does bother me a little bit. And I've been a part of these meetings enough to understand that when you have another body responsible, you've separated yourself from that responsibility a bit. So I'm just throwing that out there for council to consider. I think us sitting up there at a dais talking about redistricting with our fellow citizens is important. And then lastly, let's think together, you know, offline, on what is most fruitful for all of us, information that's here prior to a joint meeting, so that we're not wasting their time, that we can kind of really get to brass tacks on how we move forward on redistricting. I think Carrie brought up some really astute issues with the timing of this, and that while I appreciate the timeline outlaid by the previous council, dragging this out or prolonging it unnecessarily may not be necessary. So it sounds like we've got some options there as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.